We'll wait just a couple of minutes, see if Commissioner Howell is here. Let's go ahead and
Sure.
You ready? All right. Morning, everybody. Thank you. We've got a nice room here today. October 31st. This is our staff meeting on Tuesday, so we've got a few things to cover. Couple of us may have to depart at 11 ish. But Tom will take the lead. Right. Commissioners all wore their Halloween costume, blue shirts today. Very good. Commissioner Lopez, did you dress up today?
No.
Okay. All right. Anyway, welcome everybody to the meeting. Tom?
Thanks, Chairman. Good morning, Commission. We have two items for staff discussion this morning. The first will be the legislative platform discussion, and our state lobbyists are here to have that discussion with us. And then secondly, will be a discussion about some zoning and building and construction regulation regarding venues in the county, entertainment venues, and Airbnbs that we want to just talk high level with the commission about. So with that, we'll start with Tanya will lead us on the legislative platform discussion. Jason and Jessica are here for questions. All right, and before, I'm sorry, I completely forgot. Lynn would like to introduce a new employee real quickly, and then we'll get started with the task. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Really quickly, Lynn, for the record, Lynn Packer, Director of Public Works County Engineer. I wanted to take just a minute real quick to introduce to you our new traffic engineer. As you may recall, Mark Borst, our previous traffic engineer for about 37 years, retired in the middle of summer. We were able to find a excellent replacement, which was, we had been looking for over a year without any success before Mark's retirement. And so Tia Ramat is here. She is actually born and partially raised in El Dorado, Kansas. She later moved to Colorado with her family, where she eventually went to the University of Colorado, writing her bachelor's in civil engineering, stayed and got her masters actually in urban and regional planning. She's worked for BNSF, GenTV, and then, as we like to say on our side of the world, she finally spartened up and went to the public, the public side. And she has worked as a project manager, city engineer, traffic engineer, transportation planner. And she's done, she has a very unique experience working as both an engineer and the planner. She ranges everywhere from traffic and has experience with rail as well as transportation and land use planning. It's a great combination that's really going to serve her well in this role as traffic engineer.
Okay, Tia, welcome. Welcome to Sedgwick County.
Yeah, I'm just happy to be here. I didn't prepare anything, Lynn. I'm a little embarrassed, but nice to be here and thank you very much for the opportunity to serve you all.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn, for introducing her. Okay. Okay, Tanya?
Yep.
Welcome.
Okay, well, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tim, or excuse me, manager kind of gave an intro to our second draft of the legislative platform. So just a couple of things before we kind of jump in. There is one change that I want to point out, and we did this in an effort to kind of condense our legislative platform. And so departments that have a state association where we have things on our platform that duplicate what their state association is that is campaigning on and that they have on their platform. We have kind of called that out on the platform as well. So you'll see on our, our platform here, it's in italicized, and so that's what you'll see is a duplication of what the state association is, has on their platform. So I'm going to just kind of go through like I did last time per department. And we have the department heads and division heads who will be here to speak on anything that you have questions on. So we, again, we've divided by appropriations and policies, so we've, we have this in alpha order. So first is comcare. So we've got support legislative platform of the State Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas. So the first three bullet points there again are the same thing that is on their platform. So support workforce initiatives, stable and sustainable funding for 988, and continue to support the needs of uninsured and underinsured. The next three bullet points then are things on our platform that are specific to Sedgwick County alone for comcare. So identify, implement, and fund a program to reduce the number of uninsured Kansans, particularly those living at 200% of poverty or below for behavioral health. Then increase in patient beds for substance abuse treatment. 10% increase in funding for inpatient beds at a cost of approximately 1.5 million would create an additional 40 patient beds in Sedgwick County for intermediate inpatient treatment. And 150 patient beds for social detox treatment. And then that last bullet, which was brought up at the last meeting, provide funding to address the need for medical detox services for the uninsured.
Richard. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. As we go through this, I assume we want to talk about these as we go. I hate to back up, but those first three, I don't know if we can write a bill. I say this every year. If there's not legislation that needs to be drafted by a legislator, I don't know. I don't know that it belongs at the top of our platform. To me, that's these are desirable things. I think these are currently being funded. We're simply asking for the funding to continue. So I don't know, there's a bill to, a bill that you could write that would do that. Simply, it's advocacy, it's not legislation. I'd like to hear from Jason on that.
Yeah, I understand and appreciate your point. And obviously, you know, really up to the will of the, the commission. These are all things that well, support workforce initiatives. I'm not sure that that's necessarily an appropriations matter, could be, may not be, but the other two are certainly appropriations matters. And so to the extent that an appropriation bill is legislation, it's a talking point, I guess, for when we communicate with appropriators, but you know, again, I understand the point that you're making absolutely.
So again, that support workforce and support workforce initiatives is it's undefined. We don't even know what that means. I don't know. Again, we all believe that, but I can't write that bill. And then in terms of the continuing to support the needs of the uninsured and the underinsured, and the very next statement to reduce the number of uninsured Kansans, sounds like Medicaid expansion. What else are we talking about here? This is cryptic, is it? I mean, what, what are we saying here in different words?
It's following what some other states have done that have not expanded Medicaid. It's a state-funded program that addresses the issues that Medicaid expansion would address if the state were to choose to expand Medicaid. Since they've made the decision not to, this is an opportunity for them to fund it locally, and that's a state dollar program that would address the uninsured, particularly related to behavioral health costs, which are significant.
Again, we're trying to minimize words, but the way it's currently worded, if I was didn't know what you just said, I would assume this is cryptic for Medicaid expansion. So I guess if you want to clarify, we're talking about a state level program that addresses some of these issues. I think we ought to maybe add a little bit of clarity to that statement. All right, thank you, Chairman. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Just one general question. Are, are these like under appropriations or under policy? Are they prioritized or how did we put them in this order? If you remember, Tanya, when you briefed at my citizen advisory board, I have the first comment that we received is, wow, comcare must have quite a lobby because they're top of the list and they got the most things. So is, is there a priority or should that be at the top of the list?
So we had a discussion on that, Commissioner, and we asked about public services and where public services is on the priority list. And Tim, Tim, Tim's input was comcare should be at the top of the list because of how it serves the entire community. And speak to that, Tim, if I'm, if I'm misstating that.
The largest population that's impacted by, in Cedric County is through the comcare program.
I'd rest some product down.
To my, to my knowledge, they are, yes. For public services.
This is your platform, so you're free to.
But my only concern from that comment, if you look at last year's legislative platform, it was the at the top of the list and had the most things, and we got the least out of it than all of the different things that were on our platform. So I want to make sure that we're successful this year. And if comcare is the top one, I guess we can, we can lobby for that, but we, we've had so much success in the past, but we haven't had much success in the past.
I mean, for the state ones, or the ones that, is this exactly how it's worded on other things? I mean, I would hate for us to change any wording or add anything. Change is what it is on the other ones and then or I mean, of course, being supported of someone else. Different variation of what that says. I don't know if it's the same verbiage or not.
Sure. Are, are you speaking in terms of how it's stating the state association?
Yes.
Yes. My understanding it is, I think what we did though was we, we kind of condensed a little bit of what it says. So in other words, support workforce initiatives, there was a lot more to it, but we tried to condense that. And I think what we're trying to do is, on our legislative platform, we're trying to be a little bit more shortened in our, in our platform, so that we're not handing, if you will, pages of a platform, but trying to just give something a little bit more condensed to give to legislators. So to answer that, yes, the, the support workforce initiatives, that has a longer a longer information to that, but we just condensed that.
Okay. Continue on.
Keep moving on. Okay. So then to move to community developmental disability organization. This is exactly what their state associations states, and that is their state association is Interhab. So the one bullet point there is support the Interhab State Association request to restore 5 million in the state general fund and 560,000 in state made to the KDA's budget.
Seems up. Michelle?
Well, again, support legislative platform of state association, Interhab. Has anybody else read it? Got a lot of stuff on here. I think if one cherry picked that one statement off their wrist, that's fine, but I don't think we ought to be overarching, throwing our weight behind their platform unless we read it and agree to it. Want to pull off the one statement, that's fine.
And that, Commissioner, I think is what we're trying to say is that in particular, this bullet point is what we're trying to say we support the legislative.
Okay, well.
We didn't, we, we aren't trying to say the entire platform, we're just trying to say this particular item.
So if you delete that line that's bolded, it says, support legislative platform of the state associate, and just delete that. And just below that, say, support the Interhab State Association, equestria store. That's much clearer. Thank you.
Uh, this, this is an ad, and I did just want to say that Interhab is still finalizing their platform. So I can't guarantee you that that's the exact language that's going to be on their final. It's still in draft. So, you know, we're, we're hoping that that will be finalized very quickly. But it has not finalized yet, but I will stay in communication with Tanya about what the final wording looks like. And there might be one or two other ones for consideration someplace on the platform. But as I said, it's not finalized yet, so I'll, I'll stay in communication to keep that updated.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Commissioner Dennis?
CDVO, you know, is one of the issues that I bring up every day. And we've got it under appropriations, but then under policy, I don't understand why that's not under appropriations also. Of all the DVD together, because it's going to take funding to be able to reduce the list. So why is it under policy? Not anything under.
We've, we've been trying to massage this to, to separate out the two things that are, some that are specific to appropriations and some of the a more department level policy stuff, and these other three are while they do take funding, and we could certainly put them under appropriation, that's where they were last year. But we could, we could leave them where they're at, or we could put them under appropriations.
Some take funding. There's no way to reduce it without funding.
True, yeah.
If we're successful getting the 5 million, does that help adjust these three policy items?
To a limited degree. The, the funding gap is so, so long on the way to, that it's not a one-year issue. It's a multi-generational issue to resolve at this point. Their workforce implications, funding is certainly the top one, but there are a number of other implications as well.
I just don't want people to get lost and they say CDVO under appropriations, then you go back to policy and CDVO, then the goal is to get enough funding to reduce the list.
Okay, we'll move it. Okay. Uh, the next one is health department. So that is, uh, support the legislative platform of the state association, K L H D. And that is to support an additional 1.4 million in aid to local funding and changing KSA 65242 to a base plus population allocation model. This represents approximately, excuse me, approximately 275,000 locally.
May I, may I, Chairman, again, the same, same thing here. Please delete the bolded statement above that and just keep the statement below.
Okay.
So it's clear, their, their platform is alarming to me. I want to make sure we, it's very clear, we're not supporting their platform. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to policy, and I think Mike is going to provide some input. Uh, we are going to keep this on the platform. I think Mike had some discussion of possibly taking this off, and Jason might have some input as well. This is broadband access, and that's to support policy that funds broadband access through state and federal legislation. And Mike, you might want to give some input on where the state is.
Yeah.
As far as broadband.
Yeah, the last time we discussed this, you had a couple of questions for me that I didn't have answers to, and I went back to the state office. I just recently got those. One is recent as last week. Commissioner Howell, you asked about the 100 download, 20 upload requirement. And the answer that I got from them was, it's really simply a matter of federal definition. The USDA, the US Department of Treasury, and the NTIA all use 100 over 20 as the minimum qualifying speed for high-speed broadband. And the FCC has also named that number and signaled an intention to change the definition of broadband from 25 slash 3, which was, uh, which is where it's been since 2015. So they're just kind of putting their definition of broadband in line with that. The other question came from Commissioner Dennis, which was basically, what can we as a public sector organization in the state of Kansas do to support the broadband extent, uh, expansion? And I mean, at that time, I told you not a lot, right? Because the state office of broadband development has been working directly with the internet service providers. Where they've been requesting that individual citizens and businesses, private businesses, take these speed tests and go to their broadband maps and make sure that what is offered is accurate and this kind of thing. They are putting together, though, the state office is putting together a, something called a BRC, which is a broadband-ready community. And I got that answer about a week and a half ago, but it took me a little while to digest what all that means, because it has to do with public right-of-way and how that is managed, how applications for the use of public right-of-way is managed. It involved Public Works, it involved the clerk's office, and I've gotten some information on that. Basically, the information that Lynn shared was, we already do what the state is asking to put in place for, for certification, which is basically the, the help me out, Lynn, the, the giving, giving that away, right?
Correct. The, the state requires that we don't discriminate against communications, either between communications and other utilities or between communications companies themselves. As a stat, since we provide right-of-way based on state statute, it is a first come, first served. We don't allow for one type of utility or another. We don't reserve right-of-way for those. And we do not have a preference for which communications utility goes in the right-of-way.
So they have, the state has drafted up this ordinance that they're hoping to put in place. They say other states have done similar things. They said the state of Indiana kind of piloted it, and it's, as I said, very much in line with what our current practice is. So I offered to kind of spearhead that within the state of Kansas. If the office wanted to take advantage of that, and they, they sounded enthusiastic about that, so we'll see where that goes. I, I kind of think at this point, it can really come off of our legislative platform. I'd take maybe our lobbyist recommendation or input before confirming that, but that's kind of what I said.
Okay.
Well, rather than take it off, I really think it ought to be under appropriations also, because we need funding in order to be able to do that. It's sitting on $3 billion up there. And rural communities are so underserved on broadband that we need some kind of funding in order to be able to standard the broadband into the rural community. So I think we got it in the wrong place again.
Well, the Commissioner, that, that funding has already been identified, right, with that that large grant, the, the federal grant that came out, the state has already gotten their share of that. They're now coming up with a five-year plan on how to, how to award that.
But will that five-year plan get a rural areas broadband?
That's their intent.
Jason?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agree and disagree a little bit with, with with Mike. But first, let me address Commissioner Dennis's point. So Mike's correct in that the money is already there. It's now no longer really an appropriations matter. Appropriations doesn't have anything to do with this. This money, and it's primarily federal money, although you do have a little bit of state money through the transportation program, for example, that is, is being used for broadband. But when he's talking about the, the Kansas broadband office, I mean, that's where all that federal money is flowing through. And then that office is deciding where it goes. So you know, I don't know necessarily that I would take it off, because my concern is, and you voiced it just a little bit, Commissioner Dennis, there are still a lot of underserved areas in Sedgwick County, and not just Sedgwick County, but throughout the state. The bottom line on this is, this is a lot of money, and anytime there's a lot of money, there's a lot of interest competing for it. And so I think from a policy standpoint, for this commission, your concern needs to be, are we getting our fair share based on our need and based on our population? And so if I were going to have something on my agenda related to broadband, it would be a statement that we need, you know, we need our fair share. It's not how you'd say it. I'll let you wordsmith that, but we need to make sure that we're getting our fair share based on the need and the population. Uh, the final thing I would say, again, going to the point of this being very competitive, and Jessica and I do a lot of work in the broadband space for some other companies, some of which you're familiar with. They are a part of that competitive process. It's really not the office of broadband looking at Sedgwick County or looking at some city and saying, well, we're just going to send money over here to this town or this county. It's companies that are coming in and identifying projects. Uh, and then they make grant applications for those projects, and that's also where you can be helpful in writing letters and communicating with the Office of Broadband that you're supportive of this project, that there's a need for this project. So I don't know if Jessica would have anything to add to that or not, but you know, I think we've communicated with a few of you on local projects. We've certainly also done that with members of the local legislative delegation. So it's probably a lot of words to say I'd have something on here about broadband.
They'll probably leave it. Probably leave it. It's, I don't know if it's, the statements is accurate, maybe need to be refined slightly.
I think what you have covers what you need.
Okay. We don't need to put a Cedric County name in there to make sure I get our fair share, so to speak. Doesn't matter.
It's on our platform.
Okay.
And that's the message we're going to deliver to to Pecos.
In agreement, I think so far. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for your explanation. And Mike, thanks for your opinion and contribution. And thanks for volunteering to take it off. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to corrections. This did not change from last time that we met on juvenile corrections. And so that's support amending Senate Bill 228 to add juvenile detention facilities. And then the second bullet is support amending the juvenile offender code regarding placement issues.
Thanks. Good.
Okay.
We're going to get, I'm going to get that to finish line this year. Okay.
Okay, the next item, I will state that it was pointed out that this should move to under appropriations. So I apologize, that was an oversight on my part. This did not change from last, oh, excuse me, it did change from last time. So we added the line to support legislative platform of the state association, KCCA. So it states, support the Secretary of KDOC's request to add 5 million to the state fiscal year to 2024 budget for community corrections. And so I will move that to, to under appropriations.
I'll just say this, I have the KCCA 2023 platform in front of me. I'm not even seeing that on here. So I don't know, I don't know if it's just a I'm not sure why that is. They have a number of other, they have a number of statements on here I really like a lot and a couple I don't like, but.
Inviting Steve.
We met last Tuesday here in Cedric County, worked on that item, and the in adult, in community corrections, the governor has asked for a budget amendment of $5 million. So it was supporting that. So I don't, I don't know why that's not on there, but that was the main topic of our conversation.
I guess I would just say, there's no point in even referencing the KCCA necessarily. If we know that's the request.
That's the request.
Then we should just throw, you know, some support behind that request, if it's important to Cedric County. But again, the KCCA platform is interesting. There's a lot of things that are on here, I think, are maybe things we ought to maybe talk about at some point, but there's no point in referencing this document to make that statement. Thank you.
Okay, next item we discussed, which was community development, disability organization will move those items to under appropriations. Uh, next item then is Division of Finance. We talked about that last meeting, and no changes made to that. Uh, the next item, Commissioner Dennis, I may lean on you a little bit. You Uh, the next item, uh, Commissioner Dennis, I may lean on you a little bit. You asked me to, um, consider this for the legislative platform. This was an oversight, uh, that there was an amendment to statute KSA, uh, eight, fifteen sixty-seven through House Bill twenty-three seventy-seven. Uh, and so what that did was that removed care and case management for third DUI misdemeanors. Um, and so this is, uh, basically to support reinstating the required assessment and involvement with community-based multidisciplinary care coordination services designed to assist in connecting to recovery-oriented system of care for third DUI misdemeanors and third and subsequent DUI felonies. Um, I just might mention that I worked with, uh, Don Schuppler with Mental Health and Substance Abuse, uh, Association, who then worked with KADAD's, uh, legislators, um, liaison to, to get this statement for our platform.
Well, this did come out of mental health substance abuse, uh, folks, uh, when they were talking about the people when they get the third DUI. There's really no requirement for some kind of an intervention to try and get it so that they don't have a fourth fifth DUI. And so, uh, you need some kind of intervention and treatment to try and get them to the point where they're not going to be driving while they're in there.
Yeah. Good addition.
Okay, I'll move on to human resources. There was, um, an ask at the last meeting to add this item. So Capers Three, support effort to eliminate Capers Three and transfer those members to Capers Two. Talked with Kelly Arnold to add that statement.
And, um, I, I spoke to Jason on this as well. Just by chance, I talked to a commissioner in Johnson County, and this was very important for, on their legislative platform as well. Kelly, do you have anything to add?
If I could, Chairman, and I guess I could ask Kelly this offline, but I'm put him on the spot. We know. Do we know what the cost to Capers would be? Just because we'll be asked that question.
Like your shirt?
Pac-Man today in my office. Uh, Kelly Arnold, um, under previous hat I wore, I was with Capers. Uh, so I still follow along with Capers. Uh, this is a plan. Well, since they started Capers Three, they've always been looking at a way to fix Capers Three because it's not been a really great incentive to employees. Uh, so this year the members of the legislature are looking at uh, creating a bill that would eliminate Capers Three, move those members back to Capers Two, and then people four would be on Capers Two. The cost estimated at this point is, uh, just under, well, I'll just round it up to three hundred million is a one-time cost that would be applied out of the general fund into Capers, uh, in a grand scheme of things. If you're, when you're talking about Capers and the dollar amounts that we deal with, this is a drop in the bucket to, uh, fix a major problem. That would be a great, uh, incentive to, uh, one of Capers larger, uh, in members, uh, Sedgwick County to, uh, support this issue and provide a better, better benefit to our employees and potential recruits.
What, what does that do to the projection on, on the unfunded liability?
Yeah. Um, good question. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what, uh, the, the number on that would be. It, it's not too significant, though.
I, I think the conversion is, is a smaller part of this. I, I would say that when Capers Three was passed, they were looking at a ten billion dollar unfunded liability for the state of Kansas. And in, in, that was passed in, I think, two thousand and twelve in a thirty-year plan, actually a twenty-year plan, would have made it, I think, eighty percent solvent by two thousand and thirty-two, I believe is what the plan was. One of the things I, I, one of the things I would like to see us think about is whether, whether a private sector model, such as a four fifty-seven with a matching immediate investing on day one of employment uh, with employee control, how it's invested, how aggressively and uh, and again, ownership, portability, those types of, those types of things. Again, I know it's not a pension, but pensions, again, I think are gonna be hard to pass potentially. Um, but do you think that moving towards a private sector model may be something we ought to be looking at?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware that members of legislature are looking at that specific issue, um, as far as the, uh, the, uh, the valuation of, of the fund. Um, it is, and, um, we are in a much better position now than we were when we went to, uh, tier three, which has been over ten years ago and obviously under previous leadership, Capers, they did a great job. So.
And, and that's because the bill is doing what it's supposed to do, what it's designed to do. And again, I understand that Capers Three is a, is a wet blanket on unemployment. I get that. But again, private sector is our biggest competitor, I think, and, um, I think there's ways to solve this problem. And one, one of the things I have said over, I have said since this law passed in two thousand and twelve, it's Capers Three does not solve the unfunded liability for Capers Two or Capers One. Uh, Capers Three is, is independent dollars. In fact, it has a small cost to the state of Kansas to, to manage those dollars. But those dollars and the interest that they earn has no benefit whatsoever to Capers One and Two. So once again, uh, the, the member owns all of the money that, that is, uh, that is donated and invested. And all the interest earned is, is, is owned by the member. So again, Capers Three doesn't solve that problem. And with that in mind, uh, adding, if you will, back to the pension program creates, and then, again, another unfunded liability to the state of Kansas. I wouldn't, I'm gonna guess in the billions of dollars. Yeah, that's where we just came from. So I don't know if that's viable. I, I love, again, I look at Jason, he's, uh, he knows a lot more about this than I think I do, but is this viable?
I think so. Um, it, it is interesting that the three hundred million dollars is a drop in the bucket compared to the overall Capers Fund, absolutely, but you know, I think to your question, you reduce the impact to the unfunded liability. That's why they're putting the three hundred million in from SGF upfront. So that's not a small number, you know, SGF-wise, um. You know, in terms of, that's an argument that you were having when you were in the legislature and I was having when I was in the legislature as to, you know, do you move to some sort of private sector model and I, the will's not there to do it. Um.
So Commissioner, I was just looking and the topic of Capers Three as well as a four fifty-seven plan is on the agenda this Friday. Um, there is an interim committee. So perhaps we consider, um, just saying something here that support effort to reform Capers Three to a better option that would leave that open. I don't know, but you could make this a little more general understanding that Capers Three is not working and we need a solution, but they will be discussing the two, um, those two options on Friday.
I think that's a better way to go, and I love the idea of having a discussion about potentially something besides Capers Two, again.
We'll circulate those notes to the commission after the meeting on Friday.
Thank you. I, I would agree with that, what she just described. That'd be, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next item under, um, human resources, that it changed from, uh, last meeting, that was to amend, uh, KSA seventy-four forty-nine fourteen for exception to Capers penalty for any retired being hired at Capers participants. So, um, I'll move on to M A B C D. Uh, this did not change except for a little bit of wordsmithing. Uh, remove sunset provisions of the City County Urban Area Nuisance Abatement Act contained within KSA nineteen twenty-six, uh, one-twenty and allow us to remain.
Sorry. Oh, I, I just want to go back to the other, um, Capers penalty. And Sheena, I don't know if this is a question for you, but is there a solution? Does anyone have actual language of what the remedy to that penalty would be? Or is it just knowing that there's challenges now that make it difficult for you to hire?
I think the solution would be to just remove it altogether.
Remove the penalty.
Yes. And I might add on that, too. I think it, to clarify more, it should be stated that, um, the Capers penalty for any retiree being hired into a Capers-covered position because we do hire retirees into non-covered positions and there's, of course, that penalty doesn't apply there.
Is anyone else advocating for this or it's kind of universal that this is a barrier, but you're not aware that there's actually a group supporting legislation?
I, I would say many employers are struggling with it, um, not just us, but we see it quite a bit because of how many early retirees that we.
There's no cohesive effort among all who are experiencing the challenge of this policy to change it.
Correct.
I think that that's part of that very first list, item listed under, um, on care, before I talk about workforce. I think that's the association's issues is. At the very, I, I agree with Sheena. If we could eliminate that penalty, that would be great. If we could expand the pool where the penalty doesn't apply to people who are licensed, that would help. It's not quite as big a price ticket, but it would certainly help address the behavioral health shortages across the state if they do that.
Well, I think overall workforce shortages, too.
You know, just a, one thought. Again, we, we had a bill last year on this. Municipalities everywhere would like to see this changed as a cost to the state without the reason they have this penalty is because they feel like people are double-dipping by retiring early and then come back into their old job and, and essentially have the, have a kick and eat it too type of thing. But with low unemployment, that could be a trigger potentially to have some, some relief here. And I think last year that was a part of the discussion. There was, it was a bill last year. We testified in committee. It had an excellent hearing. I think the committee was really jazzed to move forward. I don't know if, if leadership got involved in this or whatever, but this is, this can be expensive to the state if it's a permanent change. But I think, again, if you use unemployment rates as a trigger to help us enlarge our pool. And then, again, I think what they did with this bill is they, they messed with the the penalties a little bit. They lowered the penalties. They didn't necessarily get rid of them completely. And they changed the timeline when you become available to, to come back to work. So it made it so we can go after an employee much easier, but it didn't, it didn't just wipe it from the, it didn't wipe it completely clean, but it was a huge step in the right direction. And that bill, I think, was, was very viable.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, I covered the M A B C D item.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in very quickly. You say remove the sunset and, um, I, I, we're measured on our success with this legislative agenda, um, as we should be. So I want to say probably not going to get the sunset removed. What typically will happen is they'll just push, you know, they'll, they'll renew the legislation with a new sunset that's three years down the road or five years down the road. You know, this, the adoption of, of this particular policy was not without um, that, there was a lot of concern amongst property rights folks about how this was going to work out and how Sedgwick County was going to do this and, you know, uh, KLA, Kansas Livestock Association, Farm Bureau. Everybody was kind of involved in, okay, we'll give this a try with the three-year sunset. They're going to come back with a report. So this would also be a good time to say we need to have that report ready to go. I believe it's due in January. And, but, and I think we can get the legislation renewed. Probably not going to get the sunset removed, which is not a big deal.
Chairman, may I make a comment quickly? Justin Wider, County Counselor. I, I think in line with what, uh, Mr. Watkins is saying, I think instead of the word remove, we extend the sunset provisions. Um, also just a very minor thing, I think in place of SB fifty-two, the word nuisance abatement could probably be added in there. Um, just because that's an old bill that I don't think anyone probably remembers the number except folks around this table. It's really all I've got.
Good. Good suggestion.
It's just when you, when you reference a bill like that, also add the year because it was, uh, prior to last year we passed that. And just as a, a point of clarification here, I'm not sure we've even used this. Actually, it's just a tool in the toolbox. It helps us have a conversation. It's more effective to me to have things cleaned up. But I'm not sure we've, we've not actually exercised this by taking, by doing the point the law allowed us to do. We've never exercised it to the end, to the end. So it's just allowed us to have a better conversation.
Yeah. Chris is here, and Chris and I had this conversation maybe last year. I think the, I hate to use the word threat, but the, the threat of it, um, has caused people to do what we, what we needed them to do. So the legislation having this in statute, I think, is kind of effective for us, but you're right, uh, we, we've not had to drop the proverbial hammer.
Okay. Thanks for the comments. Go ahead.
Okay, next item is, uh, for planning, and that is to amend KSA sixty-six twenty nineteen to allow local governments to consider cell tower zoning and conditional use cases using the same factors outlined by the Kansas Teleports for all other zoning and conditional use cases.
Question? Can the BCD and MAPD are consolidated? See, Wichita, these are joint, uh, departments. Will these also be on Wichita's legislative agenda? Are they coming from Chris and Scott, or is this something that we're doing without trying to reconcile with Wichita? I think since this is a joint department, I think it makes sense if these are also on Wichita's legislative agenda.
For the cell towers.
All cell towers.
Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. I'll tell you for the, uh, cell tower one, we can float, we'll float that idea. Um, the city has not nailed down what their agenda is in terms of legislative agenda, so, uh, we'll see how that turns out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Jason, do we have any chance? Because everything dealing with cell towers, uh, happened about six or seven years ago when, uh, the lobbyists from the cell industry got together and completely changed all of our rules and regulations that we had. We had to completely redo all of our zoning regulations as a result of that because of the power of that, uh, lobby group. Uh, do we have any chance whatsoever of changing that? Uh, I don't want to spend a lot of political capital on something that was bound to lose.
I don't have a good answer for you on this today because this is fairly, uh, new topic for us. Um, you know, the, the telephone lobby is big and strong and powerful, but not, not what they were. Um, so I'd need to think about it, a little, understand the issue a little bit more, talk with some folks in legislative leadership. Um, we usually are pretty confident that, that we can get stuff done.
Well, I think one of the senators that was really behind all this has retired since then, too. So there may be a better up, Olson, was it Rob Olson?
He's still, he's, he's got one more year.
Oh, he is. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry about that. I thought he was.
I'm still on there, maybe you can see when all this changed. And we had all of our broadband regulations in place and all kinds of rules and so forth.
Yeah.
And, uh, that legislation hit and, uh, completely gutted all, everything we've done up to that point. We had to completely redo everything with the new standards. So it, they're pretty powerful.
Well, and I better understand now the situation since we've put a name with it. Um, he's no longer chair of that committee. I don't even know if he's on that. Or, um, and he's not in good stead with leadership.
Okay. Well, I think give it a gall try.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, next item is property tax and, uh, put this statement together based on the discussion from the last meetings. It is to support state action that would ease property tax burden for Sedgwick County taxpayers through reductions to the state twenty-one point five mil levy rate.
I appreciate you putting this on here and I think, uh, Jason, you just heard what we talked about last time. But what my worry is, KAC is really, really, really pushing for, uh, LABTR and CCRS come back to the counties and, and my worry is as soon as we start pushing that, they're just going to delete the, the law and say, hey, we don't have to do it because it's gone. But we still want to provide some property tax relief to our communities and we can do that and do the tax going to the schools. So if we push them to reduce that twenty-one point five on a, a rated scale of some sort by county, uh, then the taxpayers can still recognize the same reduction in property tax that if they gave the money directly back to us through LABTR or CCRL. And they look like heroes because they reduced the property tax. And we don't have to fight the battle of one that we're going to lose by then just deleting it, and then that goes away. So I, I just hope you understood what, why I thought that it was a good idea to change our, our goals in this. I know KAC probably not going to appreciate us, but I think this has a much better chance of passing.
Commissioner, we appreciate the approach that you are choosing to take and recognizing what the political realities are. So we feel very comfortable with this and, and appreciate that we're not having to advise you that LABTR is, is dead in the water and, and thank you for understanding that.
If I may add to this conversation on property tax, there's a lot of discussions happening, I'm, I'm assuming with the legislators in this space. discussions happening, I'm, I'm assuming with the legislators in this space and a lot of different ideas. This is big. And I, I think my fear is just obviously the legislative agenda isn't the only piece of it's not the only place where we want to have some input and what comes. I've had a few legislators, we've been hosting some roundtable discussions on other topics, foster care, homelessness. We had a specific legislator last week or two weeks ago say in the room, in this room say, hey, when we do legislative agenda, why don't we have one of these roundtables with South Central delegation and come in the room and talk through some of these things? Would, would you recommend, this is one of those where I would love to have a conversation with the South Central delegation so they understand broadly some of the fears. I'm, I'm A okay with guardrails from the state level on property taxes. I'm fearful if we try to do some things that would create and manufacture and manipulate values. And, and I would just love to be able to get in a room and have conversations with legislators in a roundtable fashion. Is that something that you would recommend we do?
I, I would. I think that's very effective in in moving towards success with your legislative agenda. There's a double edged sword here because I see some groups that want to involve legislators in the crafting of their legislative agenda. And I, I caution a little bit that you be careful about that because it's your job to create your legislative agenda and then communicate it to your elected officials and they should go work on that because they're supposed to be responsive to their constituencies. At the same time, the other side of that sword is the more involvement that some of your significant legislators have as you are crafting your legislative agenda, then the more ownership they feel that they have in it, which is an incentive for them to work hard to go ensure the success.
I, I think there's another aspect that needs to be mentioned too, is I think that we have a responsibility to make sure that our South Central delegation understands the challenges in local government. And, and that's not going to be communicated unless we actually help communicate that. And so I think, and then they can, and I'm fully confident they'll advocate for us if they understood some of these challenges. And so I think that roundtable might be something that might be beneficial for, for this commission with our South Central delegation. So I, this is the area that I highlighted that I think there's just significant more conversation that needs to happen. So they understand some of our, not just concerns, but what it is. We're advocating for the same constituents. We have, we have shared constituents and how do we, how do we accomplish the end goal? Also making sure they understand the concerns at the, at the county level.
Absolutely. And Commissioner, I think there's a very good point here. And Jessica and I tell every single one of our clients the same thing. We think we're really, really good at what we do. Frankly, I think we're some of the best. We're never going to be as effective having a conversation as you will be. You know, the actual constituent. It's why it's such an advantage to have folks like Commissioner Howe come up and do the testimony. I testify a lot for a lot of our clients. I don't testify for you hardly ever because Commissioner Howe is willing to come up and do it. And that's a good thing. It's much better for those legislators to hear from you on an issue than me. We'll always be there. We'll always be in the background. We're always communicating with them. But the more that you, all five of you actually are a part of those conversations, the greater likelihood of success on this legislative platform.
I was going to ask also, I, I, I need to be prepared for this discussion and right now the narrative that's being repeated is a telephone game. No one actually has their original data besides K P I. I asked leadership a few weeks ago and they referred me to K P I. K P I's data is flawed. So I guess I would ask, we, can we get legislative research to, to provide, if you will, a neutral, politically neutral data to validate the history of these programs? Because here's what they said. Last time this was funded, everybody, everyone increased their property taxes while it was being funded. And I can tell you by looking at Central County's data, that's just not true. And I, I, they, they, they talk about a slush fund, how this revenue simply just becomes fun money for the, for the, for the elected officials. And I would actually argue it does exactly what it's intended to do to lower property taxes. In fact, our perspective, and I got this part of this from the K C C A, Mike Taylor. But some of the history of this is extremely interesting. This goes back, what nineteen twenties ish? They act like this was a very short lived program. And the reality is the reason the state provided some of these programs, these, these monies is because they eliminated local government's right to generate revenue through other programs. So they, they restricted us. We were, we were collecting money, for example, excise fees locally. They removed that right for us to do that and paid us from the state level to offset that loss of revenue. That's the history. And no one seems to know that. And so, you know, when they take, take that revenue stream away, they replace it for a while and they take it away again. We have no choice but to go back to property taxes. So me, the history is incredibly important. My analysis is, it sounds crazy between, between, between the local sales tax and the county sales tax to the city of Derby. Between those two things, locally approved sales tax and central county sales tax. They have a forty mil reduction in their, in their property taxes in Derby. This type of reduction is real. Wichita has a twenty four mil reduction because the city and county tax, sales tax revenue. So the idea that we are just simply collecting more revenue, we're going to spend it is just not true. If those revenue streams disappear, you have no choice but to, to replace it with property tax. So again, the arguments are awesome, but I just don't know why we can't, why we can't get them to understand our perspective on this.
Commissioner, you, you started out asking about a research request and the history. So Jason and I do not have the power as lobbyists to make a request of legislative research. That must come from a legislator. We are happy to ask someone, I might suggest for efficiency purposes, that you may know a legislator that could make that request very easy. But that being said, we're, we're happy to put that request in front of the legislator to see if they would be willing to make it. It should be very specific and clear what we're wanting research to report back.
I would love to, I would love to. How fast can they get that data back to us?
You know, that I have seen research requests turn around very quickly and some that take longer. Certainly if you're interested in this, we need to get it to them sooner rather than later.
This time of year.
Their time is starting to get monopolized.
We're hoping to meet with you folks in the, between the election this next week and, and our Christmas break. So I, I would love to get that data so that we have factual data. We could present to them. Again, I would like to move past the false narrative and that's really what this is.
Well, why don't you shoot me an email with some specifics on here's what I'd like research to provide? And we'll, we'll get that, we'll find a legislator to submit that. I know that you know your state representative fairly well, but maybe we'll just run that through a different one. So there's some.
I do know her. Again, I think they're all, they're all terrified. They're all terrified. You didn't ask any questions. They felt they're going to be, they're going to get some kind of negative criticism for even simply asking to validate. I think that's, that's all I'm asking for is validate, please.
Just shoot me an email and we'll, we'll get it done.
In the meantime, I would encourage you to just have that data ready about Sedgwick County so that because you, you have access to that, your folks should be able to put that together when you have that conversation. But hopefully we can get the broader information quickly.
If we go to that detail of trying to get information about the history of C C R S and L A V T R. I don't want it to detract from what our real goal is, and that's reduce property tax that through reducing twenty one point five mil that comes into us. So, so they're kind of different, but they're kind of coupled also. So our, our real goal is to reduce property tax. To stop some of the other ideas that are happening up there at the legislature. Don't get everything confused.
Understood, Commissioner. And, and a, a research request for some data. It's up to you guys what you do with that. Once we give it to you, they're not going to tell the legislature. I mean, legislators can watch these proceedings, but research isn't going to go to the legislature and say, hey, somebody asked for this information, you know, it's, they're going to get the information, they can give it to you and you do with it what you want. But I, it's clear to us these, you know, the ultimate goal is a reduction in property taxes and I think we can work on both of these.
I, I, go ahead, go ahead. I agree with Commissioner Dennis on this. However, the, those, those revenue programs were formulaic. It was based on actually a pretty darn good formula. Whereas this method, although it provides relief, it's not formulaic. It's not going to be the same benefit necessarily to, you know, to every taxpayer across the state because it's not following the same method. Second of all, I think when you, when you go to this idea. This again, again, it helps us as long as it's funded because you're getting so far away from the history of this. I, I, I fear that in a year or two, they'll just, when they have money problems, they'll just not fund this again. And then again, we'll, we'll be right back out where we are today. So I, I, I don't know how you, how you do this long term. Second of all, I know, I, I just, I say this, I have to go to a appointment. So I'm going to, I'm going to get on zoom here just a second. But the idea that they would exempt a state from the Senate Bill thirteen provisions and not have to vote. Again, I think this twenty one point five mils. If assessed value goes up nine percent like it did last year, we should calculate the same dollars that creates. They need to vote to, to go back to twenty one point five, whatever that number is going to be. I think that's reasonable. I, I know that's, I don't, I don't see that in here. But it's a pretty darn good argument as well. And I think that the state ought to put themselves in the same vote or in. We're going to continue talking about property taxes. They ought to be able to vote to exceed the revenue neutral right for the state of Kansas. Let's talk with that. I'm going to get on zoom. Thank you so much. Commissioner Dennis, you're in charge because I have to go to, I have to go to an appointment. I'll be on zoom. You're in charge. Thank you.
Okay. Just to extract this a little bit quicker here, the next two items, public works and the suspended driver's license law that, that did not change from the last meeting. And as well, these are the same things that we got on last year's platform. And that concludes the platform.
I know the driver's license thing is getting old and get it, but there was two wonderful interim committees this last month. I testified in both of those. I can tell you this has momentum and I think it is actually going to see some solution this year. So I'm pleased, I, I'm floored. I said, please keep this on the platform. Thank you.
One second, sir. I'm so sorry. There's something that isn't on here that we've been talking about recently and this was going on at our Sedgwick County jail with individuals that are coming and that have Medicaid. They come into our Sedgwick County jail. Medicaid is not suspended. It's canceled and the local taxpayer having to take up the cost through property tax dollars of, of their medical care. I, I, I have a serious issue with this policy for a couple of reasons. One is because it's shifting the tax burden to local property tax dollars. And two, it's a violation of due process where people are are being booked in or charged with a crime, not convicted and they're losing Medicaid, their, their Medicaid coverage. So I, I see this as a significant problem. I don't know if it is elevated to where we need to address this from a legislative angle, but I think it's costing our taxpayers locally disproportionately. And I, and I think this is a, in my opinion, it's a violation of, of, of bigger principles that we should stand for. So Jason, I don't know if this should be a legislative issue in regards to that. I don't even know what the genesis of this problem is, but I think it's a flagrant issue that we're dealing with at Sedgwick County jail. And I know the sheriff's association is putting this on their legislative package, but I think that if we're advocating for our local taxpayers, and I think that we should, this should be something that is, we deem as serious.
Commissioner had a conversation yesterday with Chairman Meisner and then talked with Tom and Tanya just a little bit. I, I want to better understand. Is this just a K Dads policy that they can change? Just on their own? Is there something through the rule and right process they have to, or will it ultimately take legislation? All of that to say, I know Commissioner Meisner said this is a seven million dollar annual hit to Johnson County. Probably more significant here. So we have more folks in our jail, I believe. So one way or another, yes, I think something needs to be on, on the agenda. Might be good to bring you back some language after we better understand exactly what we need to do because I didn't hear about this until yesterday.
I agree with Commissioner Beatty that we need to figure out a way to address it. We want to ask the sheriff this, that question. Should this be on our legislative agenda? He said he was working with the governor and see if between he and the governor, they can work it out. So until I know exactly what the sheriff wants to do, I don't know if I'm ready to put it on legislative agenda.
To be fair, Jason did this, hear about this yesterday. The question is, is this legislative action or administrative action? I think that's what he needs time to.
If you can let us know, Jason or Lindsay, if you have any.
Well, if I could just add, so some new information that we received yesterday from the sheriff's office is that this is actually a federal rule. There's a federal Medicaid inmate exclusion policy that prohibits billing Medicaid for inmate care unless there's a hospital stay of twenty four hours or more. So it would seem that we need to do more than just a state legislative platform issue. This may be worth adding to our federal platform.
And, and this is those in, in county jails that are just charged with crimes, not convicted. Yeah, that's a problem.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on the legislative agenda?
I don't have anything unless the manager has some. Okay.
Jason, let Jessica know how much we appreciate you being here today. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you and appreciate the opportunity and work for you.
Let's, Scott, are you going to start us off or? Go ahead. Scott has a presentation on event centers.
Good morning. And I'm going to ask Chris to come up too, because we're going to transition during the PowerPoint. Right. Got a handy dandy clicker. Okay. Fantastic. Thanks for the opportunity to present. This is on entertainment centers in the county. So, so today our purpose is to provide an overview of current conditions and also an opportunity for discussion and questions about this issue. I really see this as and it's not the very start of the conversation, but we're really at the beginning of the conversation on this one. So in terms of overview, we're going to talk about again, events centers in the county, but we're also going to talk a little bit about short term rentals in the county as well. So you'll see that in here. So the first place that we're going to start is with unified zoning code. And this is specifically about the event centers in the county. So there's a number of things that are included in the zoning code and it's actually a lot of things, but a number of them that are pertinent to this conversation is talking about agricultural exemption, the definition of agriculture, and then what an event center in the county is according to the zoning code. So we'll go through all of that a little bit more in depth. Now, I know you can't read this on the slides, but I'll go ahead and I'll read out just a little bit of it. So for the agricultural exemption, this is in the zoning code. And it says, this code shall not apply within the unincorporated area of the county to the use of land for agricultural purposes. And then it goes along and there it explains a, a little bit about examples of what is covered in there. Now, event centers in the county are not listed under this. They're not covered under this. This is really for what you would think of in terms of farming operation, raising livestock, those kinds of things. And there's examples of what's related there as well. Now there's a, a definition of agriculture that's provided in the zoning code. And I think this is what many people would expect. The use of land for the purpose of growing plants, crops, trees, agricultural, et cetera. There in addition, as you go a little bit further down, you're going to see agriculture shall also include expanded ranges of uses which allow members of the general public for recreational, entertainment or educational purposes to view, participate or otherwise enjoy activities related to agricultural uses. And then there's a listing of examples. This includes farmers markets, new picket activities, canning, cooking, gardening, pumpkin patches, hay rides. So there's a whole variety of things that are covered under agricultural. Now remember, the, you can do these activities, but they have to be related to agriculture. So it can't just be out by itself. It's got to be related to agriculture in some way. So that's agricultural. It doesn't, if you'll notice, we have not covered event center in the county. Okay. So a lot of people have talked about, well, agricultural exemption, you can do what you want. Well, within limits. But as we look further for event center in the county, what we'll find is that there is a definition of that in the zoning code. And it's a premises that's frequently rented out for public or private activities that are not repeated on a weekly basis and that are not open to the public on a daily basis at times other than when an event is scheduled. So it is very much what it says, an event center. Now, the way our zoning code works is I like to refer to this handy dandy table. It's, it lists all the different uses. It lists the different zoning districts. It's very, very helpful. And what you'll notice is event center in the county is listed in its own defined term. You can see that it's generally permitted in a variety of different districts, including rural residential, but you have to do a little bit more investigation to look at the conditions clause, which is at the end. And that sends us to another section of the code which says that especially for event center in the county, they're permitted by right on sites of twenty acres or more. So there's no conditional use. There's no additional zoning permission that needs to be provided for those. If you've got a property that's twenty acres or more in size, you can have an event center. So, so that's the overview in terms of the regulations for the county. This was changed in 2016. Justin brought this to my attention and I appreciated that background. You've got a packet of materials that was handed out. It's pretty thick. And it's just got a series of staff reports and memos and minutes from different meetings. This is when this was changed in order to, and allows for the event centers by right on 20 acres or more. So a little bit of the background on that one. So with that, I'm going to pivot and turn it over to Chris because M A B C D handles enforcement of the zoning code in the unincorporated county. So I'm going to let him talk to you about existing conditions.
Thank you, Scott, and good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Chris Labor, M A B C D. And just as Scott said, so we do have several existing event centers in the county. It is a little interesting since some are just included by right. They don't necessarily have to let us know they're out there. So, but the ones we're aware of are listed here, listed in the order that Kelly Dixon and staff thought of them. So no particular there. Do note that one of them we have on there is still unnamed and it is, has been approved by the M A P C and will come forward to you as well. So a few things we wanted to point out with this, each district does have at least one of these. So all of you have these. At present, one interesting thing we'll see as we go through this is you've got a combination of conditional and planned use authorizations as well as by right. Smallest of these is five acres and then we have at least one on 40 plus. I think we have a few on 40 plus. As you would expect, the more populated the area around the event, the event center, the more attention it gets, the more complaints we see, et cetera, et cetera. So two of these, I do want to point out as we go forward, represent the vast majority of complaints and attention that we get. So a few pictures that Scott has included here, you can see that they are quite nice. They're provided very classy venues, some very interesting opportunities for members of the community. So these are obviously well thought out, very involved businesses in many cases, and we are sensitive to that. So when we get specific to complaints, if you will, or the attention that these garner, here's what we generally see, and I think you all will note, as I'll point out at the end of this, you'll note the nature of these. So noise, and that includes operating hours. So obviously we have no noise ordinance in the county. And then operating hours would only be a factor if it is, again, under a conditional use of some sort, under some restriction there. And that could be by event, or that could be of the overall venue. We do see trash, which is going to be on the county right of way, as well as the drives, particularly with individual properties. Traffic, which includes both increase to the roadways, as well as a lot of people turning on to my property type of concerns. So especially GPS, the more rural you get, people end up on neighboring properties looking for an event venue. Temporary signs, which you do see a few pictures of there. This is a legitimate complaint. We do not allow those. Obviously, we're concerned with someone tying balloons to a stop sign. And now, right now, you'd be authorized to do this, but the majority of the year, you're not allowed to place signs in the right of way. Interesting thing about this is very easily remedied in general, and it's also usually not the event owner who's doing this. It is normally there, it's just, yeah, their attendees, as they're on the way out, they're trying to mark the way for those behind them. So again, something that we've generally been able to deal with fairly well. Et cetera includes activities. We'll get a lot of complaints about just what is going on out there. Are they allowed to do this? Are they allowed to park where they're parking, et cetera? That also conspicuously absent from our list here, because Scott is going to talk more about that later, is short-term rentals, which we are seeing come up more and more. We know at least four of those on the list right now have a form of short-term rental being advertised. So when we talk volume of complaints, in each case, we will see that from the beginning because especially if there's a, any type of authorization required, that's when we, we see the complaints come in. And then in many cases, we've seen them remain steady. But to kind of bounce back up to the types of complaints we listed, very few of those result in a case, maybe very few. We don't particularly track the number of complaints we get, other than just what we're used to seeing. So we do, Kelly has a file at any given time. We know what we see. We know what we get in email. But if we don't generate a case, we don't have any specific tracking for those numbers. So I can't give you exact numbers on what we get, other than to say, we do see a steady volume of complaints, but also see a very low number of cases result from those complaints. So what I take from that, as we bounce down to the verification, so few being actionable, is we distill that down to people have a general complaint about the impact that this often has to neighboring properties and the impact it has to the environment. The environment, including roads, the right of ways, again, when we get back to the trash, et cetera. So, so that tends to be what this boils down to, is neighbors who are frustrated because they often feel that there is too liberal an allowance for what people can do on the property next to theirs. So within that, a few other considerations to hit quickly is that enforcement is challenging. Again, oftentimes, we're not dealing with something that has a specific county resolution or impacting it. We're also not generally looking at events that are happening during our normal business hours, which is how we enforce. Our enforcement actions include a notification and a compliance period, which again, generally it makes it fairly easy for us to deal with any low-level non-compliance, but remains a frustration for the neighbors because if they see something happening on a weekend, they, they want it handled right away. So then that kicks it over to someone needing to call the sheriff, dial nine one one, et cetera, which does, does get complicated in that, in that regard. And then as I touched on earlier, and as Scott talked about, with the agricultural exemptions, et cetera, in the U Z C, we do have a complexity with these. And then again, some are flat out by right. Others do have a conditional use based on their size. And so everything, if you're five acres, everything you do is under that conditional use. We have some then that have a use authorization, but are also over 20 acres, so they're authorized some by right activities. So again, very a source of frustration often for neighbors. I complain about one thing and we'll take care of that. We complain about something else and no, that's not an issue, right? But they feel it's basically the same thing. So, and then the last complicating factor kind of on top of that is again, 20 acres and above, you can have an event by right by submitting an application on a site plan to us for that and getting approval. So that, that is another source of confusion, potential confusion, I should say, if you will. So that covers what I had. If there are no specific questions there, I'll go back to Scott.
I have a couple of questions. This is Commissioner Howell.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So two questions. Number one, in the backup material that you provided, that October meeting in 2016, and we only have two pages of them, well, count the title page, three pages of minutes, but we're actually missing the, the rest of the discussion and the vote. So I guess I can go look that up, but I just simply say that in the packet, the, the final, the final discussion and the, and the vote for that amendment was, is not in the packet. So anyway, I'll go review that on my own, but I guess I would just make that point. Number one, I don't know what, what was stated there, and I don't know how the vote turned out. Second of all, if we, if we add regulations or restrictions or whatever to existing unincorporated venues out in the county, if that was to happen, are, are the current venues, are they grandfathered with this change in county code? Would it, would it impact these existing venues?
And Commissioner, I'm going to defer to Justin Wagner on that, but the bottom line is it depends, right, Justin? So it would depend on how that is done. And yes, a new legislation would not necessarily affect the existing venues. Oh, Kirk.
Commissioner Howell, I'll defer to Kirk Sponsel to answer that.
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Kirk Sponsel, Debbie County Councilor. We do have a section in our unified zoning code that does deal with non-conformities. So that section does address what we have prior uses or prior structures that, that are impacted by future regulations. And generally speaking, there is some deference to those prior uses or prior structures. I won't say emphatically that there won't be limitations, but you'll generally see those limitations in terms of if they're trying to change things in the future, if they're trying to expand upon present activities, things of that nature. But there is a general acknowledgement acceptance of the prior uses.
Okay, and then this discussion is really only about properties that are greater than 20 acres and greater. So anything that's less than that, that has a current conditional use, we're not talking about, the discussion does not apply to them in any way. Is that correct?
Sure. I would say, Commissioner, that that's generally, I don't know that that's the focus of today's discussion. We're bringing this information to you as part of the conversation. Whether you want us to focus on that, that's up for a conversation. But what we're really pointing out is, as I think you've indicated, that there are event centers that are allowed by right without any zoning action on sites that are 20 acres or larger.
Thank you for the answers. Appreciate it.
And Commissioner Dennis, can I add a quick comment? Justin Wagner, County Counselor, I did want to note, and it's in Scott's presentation that he had, if a property is 20 acres or larger, these are allowed by right. There are 12 different conditions and they're on one, I think it's the 10th slide that you have on there. Those 12 conditions are limited, so are listed within that slide. So I think, as I understand it, part of the discussion would be, you know, the, when these are permitted by right, whether those conditions are appropriate, whether the legislatively, whether the Board of County Commissioners want to consider additional conditions, amending those conditions, those types of things as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so in terms of short-term rentals, as Chris indicated, there are four event centers that are offering short-term rentals as well. So here's a couple of photos of those. Again, short-term rentals are generally what people would conceive as a Airbnb or a VRBO. And at the present time, the unified zoning code does not allow for these, generally in rural residential. So you cannot have a stay that is seven days, less than seven days. If it's seven days or more, then it's considered the same as a long-term rental, same as if you were to rent your house for six months or a year. But if it's less than seven days, then it's not allowed. So short-term rentals is relatively new. They've been around for a few years, but really gained in popularity with the mobile apps that have come out. So nationwide and even globally, we've seen a lot of local communities working to see whether or not short-term rentals are a good fit for their community and how, if they, if they are, then how they should fit into the community. And in fact, just with the unified zoning code, we saw the city of Wichita adopt changes to the zoning code in September of this year.
All right. Well, thank you. Give everybody a history because everyone's really hasn't heard of it very much today. But we have, as I said, a number of different venues out in the county. And the number, the vast majority of them are not causing any issues whatsoever. However, we do have some that are causing some significant issues out in the county. If you look at the 12 conditions that Justin brought up, they really don't address anything that can alleviate the issues that we're hearing. For example, on Sunday, there was a large event scheduled. The weather kind of curtailed it somewhat, but it was pretty well an all-day event with outdoor bans, outdoor alcohol, outdoor, everything that you could imagine with neighbors right next door. And the neighbors are upset about it, and their question is a very good question. They say, we give this venue rights. But those rights are really interfering with the rights of the neighbors, with noise, with late nights, with a lot of other things. So where do we provide rights to this venue that interfere with rights of the people that are right next door to it? And that's a hard question for me to answer. I, I don't have an answer to it because if I look at the regulations that you just talked about, they're permitted to do this. So if you live right next to it, would you be interested in having an all-day concert that goes late into the evening with 300 cars parked on 20 acres right next to you? And with alcohol and so forth being served? So that's the dilemma that Scott and Chris and everyone, everyone that's been involved in this are facing right now. Is where do we go from here? The bed and breakfast type thing is a separate issue, honestly, that came up as a result of that because the same venue that's causing a problem has an Airbnb also out there, which is a violation of our regulations. So, and the neighbors are looking at any way that they can to alleviate their concern. And so this Airbnb is the plan area, it won't solve all these other things if we solve that today. So I wanted the other commissioners to take a look at it, so that they realize what we're facing on a very regular basis now because of one venue in the county. Now, has this affected other venues in the county? Absolutely. Because now we see that there are Airbnbs out there and we have ones that are not causing any problem whatsoever, that are suddenly affected by this issue. So we're now penalizing people that are not causing any problems whatsoever because we're telling them they can't have an Airbnb by our regulation. So that's, that's really a side dilemma to the first issue. So I don't know, one thing I talked to Scott about before is good, certain things like outdoor venue, if they're going to have a concert again, can we add something to the, to our different 12 items? But there has to be a setback, let's say 1,500 feet or 2,500 feet. And I don't know if that's legal or not, because then Justin always, as every attorney tells me, what I can't do, he never tells me what I can do. So he's going to tell me that we, we can't restrict things that we've already authorized. So I don't know if we could establish setbacks and maybe solve some of the noise problems and so forth or not. Or if that would be again to the, to the situation where the, we're now removing something that we've already given permission for.
Commissioner Dennis, I think Kirk Sponsel's comments earlier on existing facilities, especially if they've already had approved zoning, or even if they've had a plan submitted, would require a case-by-case analysis under our non-conformities provisions in the zoning code. But legislatively, the Board of County Commissioners within the zoning code can affect the code for any future uses. I think there's ways you can do that and we could talk through how that could be handled. But I think that's certainly something if the board gives direction to Scott and his staff to initiate with the planning commission zoning, look at this, that's certainly something that could be looked at. And there could be different conditions that are in place now, if that's the will of the board.
Well, the first step is really getting commissions so that they know that there's an issue out there. Unless you receive a multitude of emails that I've been forward to Scott and Chris and the manager every time that a certain event happens, you don't see what we're seeing out there. So that's really the step one. You all have to recognize that there's an issue. And there's two related issues, one is Airbnb and the other is these event centers in the city, or in the county. So we've kind of gotten past first, we need to bring the other two commissioners up to speed a little bit on it. But now I need staff, that's step two. What can we do legally to help start alleviating some of these issues that we're facing constantly? I don't need a solution today because it's going to take a lot of brain power in order to come up with this. And you all have the brain power to do that. I need something brought back to the nation in the future, which we probably ought to come back to the staff meeting first in the future with some ideas. And then from that, then we can take a look at what kinds of zoning changes we need to, they need to have or resolutions that we need to adopt in order to see if we can start alleviating some of these issues. Because we we have to, I I have to be able to look the homeowners in the eye and say, when they ask me the question, why are their rights more than my rights? How did their rights take away my rights? I I can't answer that. And so I need help on answering that question. Do any commissioners have anything?
Thank you. So I have one in my district as well that has lots of concerns and that one has conditional uses that they are not needing. And um we, I feel like I've been addressing a little bit on on this one too, but even though they call and we're the neighbors are doing everything that they're supposed to be doing to turn in the complaints and then breaking the right, you know, violating their conditions, it's still not getting resolved, like they're still having the same issues years later. And so I don't know what that looks like or how we can be better by that. But if we know someone, one of these is consistently not doing as they ought to or going past the time and is there anything that we can do to help in that case to we because there are already conditions there that they're just violating?
And Commissioner, the general answer to that is that uh if we're able to verify those and they do not return to compliance, they would get to a point where their conditional use could be removed. Uh that is not an easy process, but that would be the that would be the step to take is that yes, they can they can lose that that use, that right.
It seems like with this one, all the sheriff, they make the notes, they have history, you know, documented, and then they were, they get told finally, we get to this point where you're going to have this removed and then they do better for everyone. And then they just started again. And then it's like we have to start the whole process over again. And I just don't know for these neighbors, it's just been so hard to find any anything that they can actually do to have some consistency on. So I mean, any, as we have this conversation, I'd like to just
Right. Because and that because that can be challenging. And then also we see very interesting things in the technicalities. So for example, if a uh it's an event center says the event must end at eleven, but people are still in the parking lot talking and playing music, is that now just a lack of note? Is that just now a an event in the county and no noise, no ordinance? So that yeah, so there there are a lot of challenges that come with those situations enforcement wise, we we fully understand that.
I I would agree that the the event venues and the Airbnb short term rentals are two separate conversations and both need attention. Um, so I look forward to the conversation, the event centers. The air, the short term rentals, though, I we, there are some popping up all over the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County, and they're not permitted at this point in time. How many, I know that Wichita just addressed this in their code. How many Airbnbs or short term rentals are in the city of Wichita at this point in time? Do we have any idea?
We do. And the answer is that it depends who you ask. There's there's not a great way of of tracking them. Uh the way there are companies that have emerged that do track these because when you see an Airbnb listing, typically they don't include the address. So if you go on their website or you use the app and try and
Do you estimate how many?
There's companies that track it and one that we've worked with, Granicus says uh five hundred to six hundred.
So there's five hundred to six hundred short term rentals in Wichita in the county. Do we know how many that are illegally operating in the county at this point in time? Do we have an idea?
We're aware of the the four properties with the short term rentals that community event centers, but I don't believe that we've got a handle on the total number.
I think there's a few dozen. Um, we have people that are doing that venues. We have some people that are doing that hunting lodges. Uh, we have people that are doing this country living getaways. And then we have other developers that want to do more, but this is now becoming a bit of a hindrance in a bottleneck that I think we need to address. My fear is that we are creating an uncompetitive advantage for those in Wichita versus those in the unincorporated. That this is a business model. This is not a a model that I would consider, in my personal opinion, a hindrance of any sort, a short term rental or a getaway stay. And I think it's 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 policy that I think that we should probably revisit at the county level. So that those that live in unincorporated areas have the same opportunities, the same business models capable of those live in the city of Wichita. So I I I think that now Wichita, I know they they kind of started the process, but they paused in this process. Could you give any indication as to what they've done? Because I have questions about are these now commercial properties? Are they, is there a conditional use permit for these things? I mean, I
Sure, sure. Um, there's a process for it. It it might take a little while to go through it in depth, but in short, uh the city of Wichita, they actually adopted this as part of the Unified Zoning Code, so for their portion. And it would be coming to you for your adoption to make it a uni- the unified code, but what the city of Wichita has done is that uh they allow them, but it's allowed through a zoning process. It requires the uh the property owner to apply for uh an administrative permit. Uh, and if the if the application is not controversial with the immediate adjacent and abutting property owners, then it can proceed. Uh however, if it does turn out to be controversial, then it would convert to a conditional use application.
And go through the NPC process. Got it. So is I is is the recommendation at this point in time that we revisit or just look at what Wichita has done to see if we would jointly agree to that? Is that where the next step is in this or?
You know, at this time, it's just really to point out the relationship that we're seeing between the event centers and the short term rentals. Um, in terms of short term rentals, we do know that the the city has adopted the changes to the Unified Zoning Code that those changes just at the city level would have to come to you all to be adopted to make it again, the uniform code. If you elect and you want to do something uh something for to address or handle short term rentals differently in the unincorporated county or even similarly, I mean, just differently than what it is today. You certainly have that opportunity uh at any point from now into the future.
Well, I I think on my, from my seat, I think it's would be wise policy in our end to have that discussion if we need to jointly come on board with what Wichita has done in the code. And I think there are these things existing in the county right now and they're doing it uh against policy at this point in time. And I think we need to ask ourselves and make a determination, is this something that we're going to remain illegal and not not in accordance to our policy? Or is this just bad policy that needs change? So I I don't know what that looks like in the conversation, but I think we need to have that conversation at this point in time to to figure out if we want to adopt what Wichita has done.
This is Jim, Commissioner Howell. I have another couple of questions. So if it's not a homestead for the property owner and it's only there for a short term rental, my question is, um, number one, is it assessed at a commercial rate? Or is it still assessed at a residential rate? And secondly, is it collecting the transient guest tax? Um, so again, being on a play, a fair playing field, I guess I'd just be curious how why or why not is uh are we treating them differently? And I guess again, my third question would be this, if someone is operating a short term rental in the county against county code, what is the penalties um that they may incur if they are caught doing that? Quite. So those are three questions. Thank you.
I'll just handle the first one in terms of uh enforcement and Chris, jump in if I get anything wrong, but in terms of enforcement, it would be the same as any other zoning code violation where there would be verification that there is an issue there. So we would get a complaint, we would do verification that there is an issue. And then uh if that is verified, then they would receive a notice that they're in violation and uh it would proceed through the regular enforcement process. So that's the last question. In terms of how the properties are appraised, uh we actually have the expert in the audience, so I'm going to turn that over to him.
Good morning, Commissioner Howell. The um if it is truly a less than twenty eight day stay, it is residential. Take, for example, hotels statewide, if they can prove that they have uh X number of occupancy that stay twenty eight days or less, um, that portion of the hotel can be assessed at a residential rate. The rest of it is a commercial. So uh to answer your question, we don't even know where these things are at. And I've done some research and trying to talk about nevadas. I mean, they have a business model that is perfect. You can't find out anything about it. And 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 it's it's extremely irritating. I I can tell you that uh PVD is looking at this. There's other state agencies that are looking at these. And they're trying to give county appraisers more information on how to handle these. But right now it is up in the air. Uh, there are some legislators that don't even want them touched. So you know, I I wonder why, but uh yeah, it it it's a difficult situation. And as far as penalizing um and you're uh you're transient guest tax, if we don't know who these people are, what what properties they own, well, I I got a feeling that we're not getting any of that in any fashion. And penalizing, we don't know who these people are. So what penalty are you going to apply?
I guess my question is if someone wants to operate above board and they are not hiding, if you will, and they are a known entity, is it our intent that in order for them to be legal with the county and the city, whatever, that they would be, is it right for them to have uh the same in place, a fair playing field? Would they be required then? If doing things the right way, would they be required then to have a, you know, collect and remit a transient guest tax on behalf of their client, their people that are staying with them? Unless they're just operating, you know, below the table, so to speak. So what 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 is uh what is expected? What's the correct thing there? Despite what's actually happening? Go ahead.
Well, I would say that would be uh part uh state legislation and then your governing bodies at the local level are going to have to put some some policies policies in place to make sure that that happens. Once that happens, then you can truly talk about penalties and so forth. And but I think there's some work to be done at the state level and work to be done at the local level. And it seems like we'd want to be talking to each other to make sure that we're we're going along the same lines.
So let me just reiterate that what I think your answer is, is that currently there is no intent to put them on a level playing field. So Airbnb that's operating in the county, whether we know about it or not, doesn't really matter. As long as it's less than twenty eight days, it's it's assessed at a residential rate. And we have no intent of putting them in terms of a fair playing field. There's no, there's no transient guest tax required according to the state or or local policy. In either case, there's no intent to do that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
For comment, I guess. For Airbnbs, I guess my concern or that type of model, my concern is if we're publicly stating where they're at and people know that there's a full home with everything in it and there's only someone there once a week, then what does that mean to those properties? So I think there is some concern with this conversation on how public um some of these things can be, just because I would be concerned if it was my property and if everyone knew there's only someone going to be there one when they leave, that all my suffering would be there. So.
Along with Commissioner Lopez's question, is the city, do they require the property owner to be on the property uh for the Airbnb or and they just have a piece of property and a ten or twelve piece of the property and and no one's around to watch it?
Sure. There's a lot of nuance to this and I love the discussion and the dialogue because um so in terms of, there's a couple of topics that have been covered here. So in terms of whether or not the property owner needs to be there, it actually, that allows me to pivot back to another answer I provided earlier, which is um, no, they do not, city would not, does not require the the property owner to be present during the the renting or use of the uh short term rental. However, they certainly have that option. So you could have a property owner who owns a house and then has an apartment in the backyard an in-law suite or something like that that they're renting out so that it is possible but not required. The city does have a licensing component. So we've been talking about zoning. There's a whole nother level to the cities, uh which is a licensing and annual licensing component for each of the dwelling units. So if you had to duplicate, you'd have to license both of them. That license requires the owner to provide and an operator provide contact information where someone can be reached twenty four seven and can respond to the property within thirty minutes. So there is that component. Um, and also I'd like to point out too that I mentioned that uh the city process requires zoning action. That is correct, probably for the majority of them, but if it is owner occupied while the unit is being rented, then then no zoning action is required. It's by right.
Thank you.
Now, on this topic, that we, sorry, Jim, that we we know that we have these things existing in unincorporated Sedgwick County. We know they're unpermissible right now. I I think we've got to have this conversation quicker sooner than later to figure out what direction we want to go in the county. Do we continue as is or they're not permissible or do we make a change? I would just, I would encourage us that we need to make this decision quicker uh than 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 to sit on it.
So I guess my final question would be this, if it is considered a basically someone's a guest in someone else's home and they may, they may charge money or not. That's really not the point. As a guest, if they say, but we're paying for one night or two nights or whatever, and they choose not to leave, otherwise they are forget what the name, what what the term is they use, but anyway, you have to go through an eviction process. It can take up to thirty days. Is that, would that apply, would that apply in this case? Or do hotels have a way to deal with this so that they don't have to go through that thirty day process?
I would offer that I do not have me, um, but that is something we could certainly research.
And and Justin Wagner, County Counselor, I'd just add that we could look into that further. I'd imagine hotels and things along those lines would uh issue trespass if somebody remain outside of the parameters, but we could check into that further.
I guess I would say that if someone is renting out a portion of their home for a day or two and if someone chose not to leave, I think they would be, they would have a squatter's issue and potentially have to work with the sheriff and an attorney and a court to get that person to leave. So that would be much different than uh may maybe a commercial business that would do the, you know, similar rental. I may, I may not understand this exactly, but I just, I think it's an interesting topic. Thank you.
Sir, if I could, um, just a couple more points on this is that um it's been a really engaging conversation. I then my takeaway is that the general consensus of the commission at this point is that we should be looking into these two issues in terms of community, the event centers in the county and also short term rentals. And um that by consensus, that's an issue that the the planning department and therefore the planning commission should be evaluating and moving forward with. So um i- if that in fact is the consensus, then one of the things that I could offer is um we can begin research. We've already already done research on short term rentals, but we can look at how other counties have handled those. We've been really focused on cities up to this point. And then we can also look into how other counties are addressing uh event centers and unincorporated counties.
Scott, nice summary because I was going to ask the manager, the next step, uh, we're going to have to get staff together, including NBCV, planning and anyone that's legal, anyone else involved in this. And it's two issues and they're separate issues, honestly. So working separately on how that we come up with it, but please come up with something sooner rather than later for both of these issues, uh bring it back to the staff meeting, get some confidence from commissioners on how we want to go on both of these issues and then have legal reps up any kind of changes or any kind of changes to the zoning that the planning is going to make.
Commissioner Dennis, I have a I have a question on that. Is there, again, I don't know if there actually is an urgency to this, but I know we have we we have a moratorium on solar, again, if you're going to crack open the the zoning law and make amendments, does it make sense to do these at the same time? And and again, there's also a a longer discussion we've had that deals with tiny homes in the community, how are we going to deal with that? I'm wondering if if these things belong together with a maybe overarching amendment to the to the zoning code or we want to deal with these one at a time?
I think Scott can answer that, but uh if we're going to crack open the zoning code for the city, which is the joint zoning code, we probably ought to try and and do it all at once rather than have the city come through us and then the county or is that the horse already left the barn?
Well, um there's a, there's a couple of different things with that. Number one is, uh just in terms of our bandwidth, what I would ask is um if we're tackling these two items, they probably will take a quite a bit of research and quite a bit of effort. So if we could, I know tiny homes is something that people are very passionate about. And so if that's an item that we could cover, maybe after we've got some initial recommendations or ideas where we want to go with these two items, I that would be beneficial from a staff standpoint, just in terms of bandwidth. And then in terms of uh the timing for short term rentals, of course, the city again has adopted theirs. I think one of the questions for you all is, do you want to um consider approving the changes that they made to short term rentals in the city? And then look at the changes to the county or do you want to hold off on that? And and it does not need to be answered today, but I think that that is one question that's outstanding.
Hi, Mr. Manager, you up to this?
Yep, we're good. I I'll just, I'll just, I was going to say, if Scott didn't, I think the bandwidth on this is, it needs to be considered. We we prefer, let's do one thing at a time and do it right. Uh, we'll, we'll do whatever the commission wants.
I agree. I I don't want to overload uh any of our departments right now because we got the big solar project that we're working with. And for those that aren't aware, I don't know, communication And for those that aren't aware, I don't know if communications got this out yet or not, but on the 16th of November, it will be. Over at Sedgwick County Extension Center, we're going to have a town hall meeting on solar, so folks are invited to that. They're spending a lot of time and effort on this one project right now, and so I don't want to overload them on that. Thanks. Anything else need to come for the? Thank you all for your journey.